Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallahan?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the broad of which we stand, for our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any communications?
No.
We will now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by approaching the podium and stating your name and address for the record.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Before I begin, I'd like to express my appreciation for the opportunity to appear before you and talk about an issue that concerns us, which is a topic of your recent meeting of 1015 height regulation. My name is Walt Frederickson. My partner, Dr. James Harkins, and I own a property at 126 91st Street. We have enjoyed living there for 18 years. We love the town of Stone Harbor. We, over the past 18 years, have really had a great opportunity to develop strong personal friendships with our adjoining neighbors, such to the fact that we attend children's weddings and we have traveled with some of our friends as well. The house renovation at 108 91st Street began September 2017 by the new owner, John Laskovich. I apologize if I'm not looking at you at all times, but I have copious notes and I have had the reputation for the gift of gab, so I'm going to try to stay focused for everyone. So at every step of the way in this 26-month renovation, it is our opinion that this owner/developer has repeatedly acted with disregard for neighbors, flaunting the basic norms of neighborliness, and flagrantly violating borough codes. The actions of Mr. Laskovich over the past two years have created conflicts with neighbors. During my initial visit to construction office, in order to raise concerns, firsthand concerns that we were observing in this construction process, I had an opportunity to talk to your colleagues in the construction department. And at that time, it was offered to me that John Laskovich had had a reputation on this island, and it was not a good one, and that quote-unquote "every project that John has engaged in in the island has resulted in frictions with neighbors." I was really told nicely that I needed to really let the construction office enforce the codes, trust the process, they had this, and they would keep close monitor of the project. I could really give you chapter and verse regarding what we and neighbors really have experienced over the past 26 months, but instead I'll offer a few examples of flagrant violations at this project. A new second-floor bumpout that faces our home, by the way, we are the immediate next-door neighbor at this project. A new second-floor bumpout infringed on the 10-foot restriction between property lines. Louvered floor-to-ceiling panels were installed on the second-floor deck of this home, effectively obscuring our view of the ocean from our second-floor deck. And a huge third-floor deck was created with a partially-covered roof pavilion over part of that deck. Other problems that we've incurred silently over this 26-month period, including arriving at our home and finding a new fence on the border that had been moved four inches over onto our property, what was previously thought as our property. In addition, all shrubs and plantings were removed from our property except for one along the property line. The grade was raised four inches between our properties, and what the owner did was, underneath the new fence, installed two-inch-by-six-inch bare unfinished wooden planks to control erosion onto our driveway. I have to tell you, a lot of expensive homes here. Our home is worth a multiple million dollars. That's the entrance to our home. We have a side entrance, and that's what we look at, our guests and neighbors. So, really alarmed by the concerns that we saw ongoing during the spring and summer of this year, I sought out the input of a neighbor who happened to be a past officer of the Stone Harbor Residents Association. And this individual went to Borough Clerk, and Suzanne listened to the concerns that were raised, and said ironically, council had just had a meeting on 1015 regarding this very issue. So upon being advised of that, I immediately went home, waited a day or two until the online session was posted, and I watched it in its entirety. And at that point in time, I called Borough Clerk and just again offered a sense of frustration that I had been to the office, construction office, three or four times, trying to point out all of these concerns that we had, we think were really good neighbors and really good people, and we were just concerned of what was happening to the property next door. Suzanne encouraged me to arrange for a meeting with Borough Administrator. Jill and I met on the 24th of October in her office. Jill was nothing but gracious, kind, and attentive to me the entire time, everything you want official that represents your borough to be. So I congratulate Jill for being so kind and giving of her time to me. So, now to the meat of the matter. I don't expect all of you to know every single word in the codes, the multitude of codes in Stone Harbor. So I prepared a handout document that Carrie was kind enough to hand out. And as you can see, it's Code 560-33. I'm not going to read the entire thing, but just the start and the part that I think is applicable to the issue at hand, which is, "Except for structures with flat roofs, upon which the floor of the deck shall be no higher than six inches above roof height." Here's the important part for me, "The floor of an outside deck shall be no higher than the floor of the highest habitable floor in said structure." A two-story structure, your second floor is your highest habitable space, this says no deck can be taller than that height. So, as such, in our view, the entire third-floor deck, along with the roof and the pavilion, which is an enormous appendage on top of this building, Frank, in the meeting, indicated he had driven past the house. I like to consider myself a lover of architecture, mostly 18th century, Georgian style particularly. I pay a lot of attention to architecture. Our primary home in Bryn Mawr meticulously addresses attention to detail, and that house next door is an atrocity architecturally. That's my personal opinion, Frank stated it. Many, many people drive by, walk by in the summer in the house and say, "Oh, my God, what's going on there?" So I have only recently spoken to Ray, the zoning official, in an effort to secure really his critical input in terms of, "How did this interpretation evolve?" Ray feels that the wording ambiguity starts with, quote, "except for structures with flat roofs," because my personal feeling is, the wording, "the floor of an outside deck shall be no higher than the floor of the highest habitable floor," is so clear. It's not open to interpretation in my mind. So I listened to Ray respectfully, and here's what I would say. I would venture to say, no one that walks by that home would say that's a flat-roofed property. What a flat-roofed property is, is the cluster of motels on Second Avenue, some of which have been converted into condos. That's a flat roof. A two-story peaked home is no way to be construed as a flat roof. At this property, in our personal opinion, we have an owner who has bastardized the architecture of the home and slipped in a structure that flies in the face of what has been several-decade-long's tradition here, quite a slippery slope, in my personal opinion. First, no third-floor structures unless grandfathered in Stone Harbor. Next, will accommodate 69 square feet of uninhabitable space with deck over, habitable space below. Now, third-floor pavilions with decks going anywhere a developer wants them to go. I think you can easily see how residents, Jim and I, are concerned, upset, and really angry at what's happening here. In the 30 years Jim and I have been together, we have had the opportunity to travel extensively, domestically, internationally. We've been very privileged. Any of you who have been to Charleston, Savannah, Nantucket, New Canaan, Connecticut, Santa Barbara, California, those are all stunningly beautiful communities, gorgeous homes, incredible Main Street commercial districts, which I call our 90th Street, the Village, and incredible school districts. Those don't happen in a vacuum. They happen in a peer when there is rigid codes regulating behavior, followed by strict adherence to codes. That's how Charleston looks like Charleston. That's why Nantucket looks like Nantucket. So I leave you with an important thought, which is, the aesthetics of a community are either enhanced or broken by decisions and judgments made along the way. Sadly, I case in point here in Stone Harbor, and I think this is a stunningly beautiful place, but we're in danger because the fairly new introduction of Atlantic City electric poles have now forced the residents to live with a Jurassic Park aesthetic, a Jurassic Park aesthetic. Now, a community that has touted itself, "We have the most stringent set-asides, no third stories, we are slipping so quickly down that slope." Those are the actions that erode a community. They are. That's what either builds it up or erodes it, bit by bit by bit. So that's our position. I believe firmly in what I just said to you about aesthetics. Aesthetics are incredibly valuable in my life, my partner's life. They enhance the enjoyment of your life. We come down to Stone Harbor, we call it our happy place, because we love it here. The amount of animosity that we've had to live with next door and be silent, never speaking to this owner in a derogative tone, picking up trash from our property, picking up nails from our property, putting it in the trash, saying nothing, I think speaks volumes. Construction vehicles parked in front of our driveway overnight, blocking entrance to our driveway. The police wanted to tow it. We said, "No, just give them a ticket." We did not want to inconvenience the construction people further for the mistake, so they ticketed it. We're really considerate, good people, and we're surrounded where we live with similarly-minded people. This new owner is different, and we've endured it for 26 months. And all I want to say is, I really want to close, and I honestly want to thank you for your service to our community, because serving in a community requires long work, sometimes unappreciated. I understand that, and it's really tough to do this on top of your standard job. It's a real service, and I commend you for it. And I guess I can only leave by imploring you all, really just to do the right thing. I retired from a company owned by Warren Buffett, a Berkshire Hathaway company. We had many philosophies, and one was just do the right thing, fall on your sword. If you feel you're culpable about an error, admit it and move on and correct it. And that's all I can do, is really implore you to do what has to be done to maintain the special place that Stone Harbor is. And I want to thank you all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Pat McGar, and I've been coming to Stone Harbor since 1946, so I know a lot about what has changed here. My husband and I moved here permanently in 2001, and we enjoyed our stay. I have just one thing that is really upsetting. The road I live on, the street I live on, the 300 block of 89th Street, is the access to the yacht club. Consequently, it is serviced every day by about 15 trucks. All are heavy, and they don't particularly slow down. Because of this, the road, the section of 89th Street, has deteriorated. There has been some construction apart from the gas lines. There was a new house built across the street where they dug to install a new water line, and there was a water leak at the beginning of the street about eight years ago, which was repaired, but the street has now fallen in. When I spoke to the Water, the Public Works about eight months ago, they said it was scheduled to be repaved, and I was just wondering if that's going to happen anytime soon. It's, I know it takes a long time, as evidenced by the 300 block of 92nd Street, which took considerable amount of time last year, but I just, my house shakes every time.
And you're on the 300 block?
Yes.
Where is that on the road program? Can somebody answer that? So it's all tied in with the pump station, 93rd and Third, and with the pump that's going in, in the 200 block of 94th Street, so, which means it is on our radar, and that project is basically, what would we call that, beginning? We're really in the very, very beginning stages of it, so I can't imagine anything would be, two years maybe? By the time we got there, I would think that would be the end of the project would be, correct?
I'm not sure my house will still be there by then.
Two years.
That long.
Because it is part of a larger project to deal with flood mitigation in your area down to the business district. So it's tied into a larger project.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your attention.
Anyone else who would like to address mayor and council? Seeing no one, I shall close. Public comment, ordinance 1561.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to offer ordinance 1561 for adoption.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1561 on first reading?
Ordinance amending Chapter 345 of the revised general ordinances. Chapter 345 of the Stone Harbor Code is land development procedures.
I'd like to move that ordinance 1561 be passed on first reading, published according to law. That'd be taken up for the second, third, and final reading and the adoption at the meeting of mayor and council, which will be held on the third day of December 2019.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yeah.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
So all these resolutions, we've added one too, because of the closed-session resolution. Got it? The number. Resolution 2019 S. 161.
Mayor and council would like to offer Resolution S. 160.
161.
161, I beg your pardon.
Second.
I'm sorry, I was, I was the resolution before that, 160.
No, they all changed by one number because of the closed session, so that's why each of these resolutions is one number off. So Resolution 161 is the state radio equipment.
For state radio equipment to be signed by the mayor.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S. 162.
I offer Resolution 2019 S. 162 for adoption.
Second.
This is a refund of a duplicate tax payment.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S. 163.
Mayor and council, I offer Resolution 2019-S-163 for adoption.
Second.
This is to award the contract for the 2019 road program for the amount of $3,938,000.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Will now have second public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Robin Casper, and I live at 8,001 Second Avenue, Stone Harbor. And I first had a question, is there ever a decision to have the council meetings at 5:30 instead of 4:30, so people who work can come?
Well, over time, it has kind of evolved to this. There was a time that it was at 7 o'clock PM, and then it was moved to 4:30 because people thought that 7 PM was too late. So it was moved to 4:30, and that's been some time ago, 15 years maybe, something like that.
Would 5:30 work?
Certainly a topic that we can discuss. I mean, it just, we have, this particular council has not talked about any change in the time. I mean, so it's certainly something that we could talk about. We could put it on a work session and see if anybody's interested in changing the time. We could, we could talk about it, sure.
Thank you. And my second question was, I may know the answer to this already, but I was concerned about the wetlands and the trapping in light of knowing that we trap in the bird sanctuary and at the point. It occurred to me that we probably trap at the wetlands too. Is that true?
To be perfectly honest with you, it doesn't fall under the jurisdiction of Stone Harbor, so I do, I cannot answer that question if there's, I would imagine if there's something specific that they want to trap, I would imagine the answer would be yes, but I don't, I can't answer for them. I do not know. I do not know specifically what they do, when they do it.
Well, I'm thinking they, they probably do, but again, I don't know. But in light of the fact that we do trap here at the point and the bird sanctuary, I am puzzled because we put so much time and energy into how we handle our trash. We even have a go-green committee to figure out the best ways to do right by the environment, and yet, we have these living animals that we don't even concern ourselves. We just let them die in these traps, and I don't understand the lack of concern or respect for them. I believe that relocation, if that's the only other alternative, I really do feel that should be addressed, and there's a lot of different angles to go with that, and I would be more than happy to assist in any possible way. There should be a wildlife refuge if we are not accepting them here. There should be a place to take them.
Anybody want to say anything, address Robin's concerns?
The fish and wildlife people that we met with said that the practice of moving animals from one location to another does not work, but the, I'm telling you what they said.
I mean, I've heard that myself.
It doesn't work because the animals in the area where they're moved to attack them and kill them. That's number one. Number two, the fish and wildlife people are concerned that the animals that would be brought to such an area could bring disease to the, I'll say, the mainland population of animals. So for those two reasons, that's what I recall from the meeting that they said, and that's why it's not done.
Well, I just feel there has to be another way to do this. I don't feel that killing them is the answer.
Well, one of the, one of the greatest obstacles, and you and I have had this discussion before, one of the, one of the greatest obstacles is the relocation guidelines specifically state where you can relocate, and it has to be within the municipality where the animal was captured, which in Stone Harbor is impossible. So, within those guidelines, it makes it impossible. It does seem, you know, if that, if we were a larger town, let's say, for example, Middle Township has, what are they, 80 square miles maybe, I think? I'm not totally sure. So it would be an option in a municipality that had, that was larger. That's, the first obstacle that we have here is, there's nowhere to take them within this municipality, period. So that is like a guideline that is set by the state. So I like to think that everybody involved with this would rather not kill an animal. So I would, there is no option based on that guideline. The only way there could even be an option would be to change the guideline, and the only way to change the guideline is to go to the state, because it is not, it isn't, let's just say that we had, you know, that everybody here was in agreement on relocation. It's a state guideline that cannot be violated, so therefore that, that guideline would have to change first.
I do have a meeting set with the state representative to talk about this.
Because that eliminates that option. The guidelines that are in place right now, and I want to say they were adopted in 2017, I'm not 100% sure, it's relatively recent. It's not an option for this town. Relocation is simply not an option. Even if we have a location, even if we have sympathetic people, it's not an option. So the only way would be, what you're saying, is somebody would have to, on some level, go about changing- go about changing those guidelines. Where you could move, perhaps you could relocate animals within a specific county. You can, within a municipality, you can relocate within 10 miles if there's a suitable location. So somewhere in the middle, perhaps, that, like I said, that would be an option. It's simply not an option for us. We just, there's nothing that meets the guideline. Nothing.
There's another point to consider, and that is, you must have the permission of the property owner-
Right.
-to whom or-
Right.
-where the animal is being-
Right. And that's what I said, even if we had a place for them to go, and we had somebody who agreed to take them, and we had sympathetic people to this particular issue, you know, including, like I say, including Fish and Wildlife themselves, I don't think anybody enjoys how this is being done. We are really stuck with that guideline. We're stuck. And you know, I've been reading every word of it, and it doesn't matter how sympathetic everyone is, if that guideline is in place, we don't have an option, because we have to participate in predator control. I mean, we're gonna, we have to do that. That's like a not-up-for-discussion type thing. We have to do what we're doing there as far as predator control, but we have no options for relocation based on the current guidelines. That being said, I think having an appointment set up with a state legislator is a good start, because I think everybody up here, if that was a viable option, I don't think anybody would say, "No, I don't want to do that." But we simply do not have that option.
I understand. I will keep you posted.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Robin. Is there anyone else who would like to address Mayor and Council? Have a motion, approving the bill list.
I would like to offer a motion to approve the bill list and authorize the CFO to pay the bills when the funds are available and the vouchers are properly endorsed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We had our second public comment. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Were adjourned.